Welcome to the Education Regional Town Hall Special as a part of KSMQ's Cities on the Move series. Tonight, we're talking about the innovative ways our region has found to deliver education. I'm your host, Stephanie Passingham. Stay tuned for an informative and engaging discussion coming up on Cities on the Move. Tonight, we will learn about the wide variety of methods and mediums that are used to educate our youth. Please welcome our special guests who will share their experiences. Wayne Olson, virtual instructor with the Blue Sky School. Steve Kriska, Director of Education Option at Houston Public Schools. Amanda Bremner, Austin Public Schools Gifted and Talented Coordinator. Lisa Irwin, Charter School Advocate. Homeschooler Cindy Stevens. And Betsy Buschla, teacher for the Mason City Public Schools. Well, thank you all of you for being here. We'd like to also welcome the members of our at-home audience to join us at any time by making a comment or asking a question either by phone or email. The phone number is 1-877-4-MY-KSMQ. That's 1-877-469-5767. Or email us at studio15@ksmq.org. And we're going to open our discussion this evening with a brief introduction. Let's start right here.
According to the U.S. Census Bureau, approximately 17% of our population is made up of school-aged children. Minnesota and Iowa generally enjoy higher-than-average national rankings for educational achievement. It may be no surprise then that the Upper Midwest is an area that leads in educators with innovative ideas. And educators often have a great deal on their plate which prompts such innovations: social issues, budgetary crunches, philosophical differences, cultural norms that encourage exploration. Whatever it is, our region has developed a wide range of methods for addressing education issues over the last 20 years. Let's start our conversation tonight by discussing some of the issues, stakeholders, and obstacles our education systems face when trying to prepare young people for a bright future.
Well, let's start our conversation with kind of the big-picture look. What are some of the issues that are facing both parents, educators, communities when they take a look at how they're going to deliver education for their kids? And what are some of the things, Wayne, and we're going to start with you, what are some of the things that prompted you to take a look at a different way of delivering education?
Well, what prompted me was the testing and the results of testing that a lot of schools would go through, particularly, I'm a math teacher, so I saw the level that the state would like us all to be at, and I saw a lot of students struggling to get to that level. So by looking at an online situation, I saw that as one method of possibly getting more students to that level of success because it's delivered in a different format, it's delivered in a different environment, something that some students will find very easy to work with and be more successful at. And it also, in my case, it gives me a chance to do a little bit more one-on-one with each student that normally I wouldn't have the ability to do in my regular classroom settings here.
Okay, so trying to reach folks that may be learning in a different way. Now, Steve, over in Houston at the public school system there, you guys offer a wide range of delivery methods. What prompted you guys to expand that offering?
Well, Minnesota's always been big on school choice, a lot of options for kids. And kids come in different sizes and different shapes, and different students and different families need different educational options. So at Houston, we really embrace the idea of providing different options for at-risk children, children that prefer not to come to a traditional public school setting and prefer to work in a home setting, or students that prefer and do well in a traditional setting. So every student excels differently in a different type of environment, and to provide different options for kids is very powerful.
All right. Lisa, you're big with the charter school movement and a big fan of that system. Sometimes folks take a look at the public school system and say, "Oh, that's not working." And you guys have found a way to kind of change up your offerings so that you're trying to fill all those needs, but sometimes that's how charter schools come to be. What are some of the issues that you think are out there, kind of in the offerings that are available that prompt people to turn to charter schools or to perhaps homeschooling or looking at different ways to offer the classroom experience?
Yes, certainly. You know, there's so many different types of charter schools in the state of Minnesota that I think this answer could be different for every single person who tried to answer it. That said, in Northfield, we actually have a very strong educational community. And back when my oldest son, who's now 17, a senior in high school, was starting kindergarten, I was looking for a different option. And particularly, I wanted smaller class sizes, a smaller school environment, and something that felt more inclusive of the entire family. And at that point in time, there was a school starting back in 1997, and I signed up my little kindergarten child and sent him off to a charter school. And he's still in a charter school now, a different one, and he's a senior about to graduate this year. But again, I think there's different reasons for different people. I know up in Woodbury, for example, they have a math and science academy, and I think that that started because they were looking to try to bring a higher level of math and science education to a specific group of kids. But there's different schools all over the state.
All right.
Well, with homeschooling, I think as parents, we look at the big picture and what's going to happen with students perhaps 10 and 15 years down the road. And as parents, we tend to want to say, "Where's my child's strengths that need to be pushed and make them excel?", whereas they also have some weaknesses that need to be pointed out to them and either curtailed or tailored into a little better behavior patterns. Whereas every parent knows their child's style of learning. In my household, I have three different learner styles, and I have to gear what I'm doing to each one of those. And I get excited about teachers who want to say they have more time with students because that's what we give as parents is our time so we can help them to excel, to be good citizens down the road, and to do what they enjoy doing instead of being a little bit of in the middle of the road trying to get by average. We, as homeschool parents, tend to want to push our children, and they sometimes push back, but that's good. That produces good character.
All right.
In the Mason City District, we felt it was important to, again, provide parents with another choice of how their child was instructed. And so we came up with a multi-age classroom approach, and it's heavy on differentiation. And again, noticing the different learning styles of students and how can we best meet the learning styles of each of the students.
For those of you who are involved in the public school system, do you find that there are some inherent challenges in your mission as assigned by states, federal government, those entities that say you shall teach every child? Are there some challenges there that you feel sometimes are hard for you to address that maybe prompt some of these other forms to come about?
Well, I think the mandates that we have can be both beneficial and a drawback. For example, some of our mandates come with funding, and so that funding allows us to develop programming that can be very beneficial for our kids. But sometimes we have mandates that come along and there's no money to actually pay for it, and so we can't implement things the way that we want to. So we're doing Austin Public Schools with Gifted and Talented Programming. The only mandate from the state of Minnesota says that we have to identify kids. But there's no purpose in identifying kids as gifted and talented if we don't plan to do anything different with them. And so we've had this great benefit come along from the Hormel Foundation with funding that's allowing us to pay to do something with these kids. And so, you know, what the state makes us do as public educators, it can be beneficial and it can be a drawback, and it just depends on how we take those mandates and implement in our districts. But certainly, they do lead to creative development because we're looking to get every child the education that they need, and we can't do that by sitting down with a class of 30 kids and teaching them all the same thing anymore.
Well, that's exactly right. You know, there are a lot of mandates, and a lot of them are very good. They do come without funding many times, and that puts even a greater stress on education to make these things happen. Through No Child Left Behind, you know, the bar, they call it, is being raised by 10% each year. So that means students that are graduating now, the expectations of them are much greater than they were, you know, five years ago, which sounds good. But like algebra next year, you can't receive high school credit for that. We used to give high school credit for Algebra I, but now because of No Child Left Behind, you know, that's not a high school credit option. So that's assuming that students are going to get to pre-cal or trig. You know, I'm not for sure if every student's going to be able to make that, you know. So there are some real struggles. You know, when we talk about differentiated learning and individualized instruction, it's really what's taking that student from where they're at and trying to obtain as much as you can with that student and the time you've given them, but to make sure everybody gets to a higher level makes some real struggles.
That is an interesting challenge. You expect everyone to raise that bar when, as some of you folks have said, individualized learning is the key to why you made your decisions. Let's talk a little bit about stakeholders. When you decided to try something new as a district, when you decided to homeschool your children, who did you have to bring along to say, "This is a good idea?", and who needs to be invested in making those decisions?
Well, I'll start with that. Houston Public Schools adopted online learning very early in Minnesota, so we were out there very early. And it was not received very well in the beginning because we were kind of pioneers in that. So stakeholders were all over the board in education and as lawmakers. I know we had to bring on the board, the school board, you know, and help them understand really what online learning could do for the district and how it can really meet the needs of students. So from that was other educators, you know, because they saw online as being competition because of open enrollment laws. But I firmly believe that is an asset to education because if there's competition, it's going to make everybody do their job a little better, and that's a good thing. So there's a lot of politics, a lot of, you know, helping people understand how this is for some, but not for all. You know, just like any particular model that we have here, it's not for every student. It's just providing different options for kids. So it's been a unique challenge over the years. But it's getting to be more and more understood that it is a sector of education now that's being approved.
I think it is a real mindset. I came from Illinois, and homeschoolers were not welcomed in the public school system. And I have to say, I'm very thankful for Minnesota. They see it as an option and a challenge for us to work together. When we came to Minnesota, they're very, very homeschool-friendly. I can go to my high school, and I was talking to Wayne, very excited about listening about AP classes online. That may be an option I want to do because I'm not good at calculus. And if you could do that, that'd be great. And I think that because now they see us as a benefit, not only financially, but because some of our students go part-time for certain classes, that we work together. But when you get to the social end of things, there are some people who just cannot see outside the box. And as a homeschooler, I've had family members come and say, "You're not qualified. How can you be a teacher?" And the socialization issue always comes up. And we deal with that as a family issue now, but you still have skeptics. If we go to the store and I'm giving a lesson on what's the best produce to buy, I will have people actually come up and say, "Are you out of school today?" And, "No, we're in school right now." And it's a chance to talk about that and enlighten some new minds. But I am very thankful that Minnesota is very willing to work with homeschoolers and I'm sure charter schools in to try and get our students to be the best in the nation. And that takes all of us working together.
Well, and the stakeholder community for charter schools is actually very defined. Charter schools are also public schools, and in order to become a charter school, you have to actually build an application. You have to find an authorizer, which means, and in fact, authorizer is an interesting word to even think about in education, but you have to find some other third party, and it can be a local school district or a college or a university, or it could be a nonprofit organization to literally sponsor or authorize your school. Now, at Art Tech, which is where my son goes to school and the school I helped to start, that's authorized or sponsored by Northfield Public Schools. And I know at Blue Sky, you are sponsored by Brooklyn Park or Brooklyn Center.
Brooklyn Center.
Brooklyn Center, thank you. So there's an automatic stakeholder that's built in that process of building your application. In addition, you have to convince the Department of Education that your idea is worthy of being implemented in a school community. So you have that community, and then in addition, you have your parents and your students and then the community that you're located in. So the stakeholder group for charter schools is, I mean, they actually give you a little picture.
You have a list. Here it is. All right. Well, Betsy, you and Amanda both kind of have programs within the district. How did you have to convince somebody within your structure that this was a good idea to try?
Well, in ours, in Austin Public Schools, it really came not as something that we had to convince anybody, but it was a good thing to do. Just as once we now have the funding, we can finally do it. It's been something that we certainly thought was a good thing to do for a long time. A lot of it came from parents seeing that their kids needed something more because they were achieving at the level that was being taught already, and we needed to increase that so that they could grow as well. And so, yeah, there was no convincing needed, just figuring out how to make it work.
I think with the multi-age classroom, we just needed to talk about differentiation and how for some learners, and it's not all, but for some learners, that this is, having a multi-age classroom is the best option for them, the best instruction for them. And it was bringing parents on board too and convincing them that this was a worthy program and having them look at their own child and help decide, is this instruction best for their child?
Yeah, somebody has to kind of take the leap and say, "I'm going to give it a try."
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Let's talk about challenges a little bit. What were some of the challenges when you wanted to try something new, whether it's charter school or homeschooling or a new program within your district already? What are some of the challenges? Was it time? Was it money? Was it some other resource? What was the biggest obstacle to actually bringing about this other choice?
Well, I can speak again. Actually, that's one of the things I like about the charter schools because if you do come forward with a proposal with something that's innovative, it seems like it's more teacher-generated. So we can go out, we can sell our program to the other teachers and explain why this is something very good. And if there is funding or if we want to make room in the funding, we can apply it. So what I saw it as is a very fluid, very easy, adaptable atmosphere where it seemed like, you know, the whole of the ideas and everything were generated by a teacher saying, "You know what? We can do this better, and we can take it to our administrator and say, 'We want to do this', and just go forward with it from there." So...
And actually, I would say, having started a charter school from literally sitting around a kitchen table with a group of teachers and parents talking about, "What do we want for our children and what do we want for our community's children?", that the obstacles were significant. There's the, "Where do you start? Who do you contact? What are your resources? How do you get funding for this?" There's the learning curve, there's the... The education community is large, it's also small. And learning who are going to be allies, who are going to be supporters, and quite frankly, who are going to be naysayers against new initiatives, and then capitalizing on your resources, it's a lot of work and it took a lot of time. That said, what would be more valuable than providing, you know, the choice for your student, for your child? So it's well worth it, but a lot of obstacles.
Cindy, how about in the homeschool situation? You kind of have a little bit more control, or at least it's perceived that you have a little bit more control. But what about resources? Can you find textbooks? Can you find, you know, activities that support the work that you're doing when you're teaching in the home?
Well, there's two sorts of resources. First one is the financial. When one parent decides that they're going to homeschool, that person is pulled out of the workforce, and most families end up losing one half of an income. So they have to decide, you know, "What my lifestyle is going to be? And I made a very good living at what I was doing." And we just learn. We don't need to have all the toys. So, and it's okay, my kids don't have all the toys. And we put that aside and say that that's a cost that we're willing to pay. The other issue, and I'll take a little different viewpoint on this, is that the $8,000 or so dollars that come to an Austin school student, there's misconceptions that we get that money. We don't get one dime. So if I'm going out to buy curriculum, you know, we have to decide, "What vacation am I going on this year?", or, "Am I going to fix my driveway or put the new roof on because I want to buy this curriculum?". And so that's coming out of my personal expenses. I have had people ask me, "Well, if you pull your kids out of schools, you know, the money goes with you and the schools don't get that money." It still stays with the schools. Where it goes, I don't know. But I know that I don't get it. So curriculum, however, is not a bad option because now that the movement has grown and grown and grown, it's growing about 7% a year, the homeschooling movement in Minnesota. There are so many curriculum providers. As a matter of fact, on the 16th and 17th in Rochester is a homeschool convention expecting 4,000 people, and they'll have over 500 vendors. Finding curriculum is not an issue.
It's not the issue.
No. They've noticed this market and they are actively seeking it.
All right. So it sounds like there are a lot of issues that many of you have addressed and overcome, and maybe some to face. But let's continue talking about some of the approaches that are available in our region, and let's take a look at Quick Tape.
According to the Choice and Education Across the States Report by the Heartland Institute, Minnesota ranked 5th and Iowa ranked 13th in school choice options that increase accountability and improve student achievement. Minnesota was the first state to enact a charter school law in 1991. Public-private partnerships are being encouraged, such as the GetStemMN.com initiative launched by the Minnesota Department of Education and the Minnesota High Tech Association. The U.S. Department of Education estimates there are approximately 1.5 million children being homeschooled across the country. Parents, teachers, administrators, and community leaders are continually finding new ways to deliver education. The number of choices for many parents are impressive and sometimes confusing. Deciphering the various attributes of each approach can be a challenge. Right here in our region, virtual education, private schools, public specialized curriculum, and homeschooling are just among the many choices.
All right, I want to remind our at-home audience that you can give us a call or email us if you have a question. The phone number is 1-877-4-MY-KSMQ or email us at studio15@ksmq. Betsy, I'm going to have you go first. This is the part where we're going to talk about exactly some of the details of how our program works. And we had a caller that called in a couple minutes ago wanting to know about the advantages to the multi-age classroom. So if you would, please, give us a start and tell us what you're doing in the classroom, and please address the viewer's question.
I have a first grade and second grade classroom. This year, I have 11 second graders and 10 first graders in one room. And it's really, the classroom is based on differentiation. And so I'm looking at where each level is the learner at, and then they're getting instruction that's at their level. Instead of reading instruction that could be much too difficult for that student or too easy for that student, they come to me in a small group setting, and they're reading literature that is their instructional level and getting instruction based on that. It's a lot of small group instruction, a lot of discovery where the students are discovering and responsible for their learning. I think the advantages of it are numerous. The kids learn a lot from each other. The second graders serve as really great role models for those first graders and pull them along in their education. And at the same time, the first graders push the second graders to achieve higher. And so, you know, I see those advantages, and really, the differentiated instruction is a huge advantage for these kids.
Do you see that at that age in particular, there is a great disparity in where they're at in their learning? Is that why that first, second grade makes sense, or is this equally applicable, do you think, to 11th, 12th graders? Or does it work especially when the kids are young?
I think it works really well right now. I think even at the third, fourth grade level, it could work well, and I think on up. And I think even in high school, we see some of that. We see multi-age classrooms all the time in high school with different grades. So I do think that it works older grades too. But I think with this, it's not right for all kids, but for some kids, that this is the best instruction for them, it works really well for them. And it's fun to kind of step back and watch the kids and see how much they can grow and learn and learn from each other, too.
Is your classroom the only one in the Mason City District?
Yes, currently, my classroom is the only multi-age classroom in the district.
And how long have you been doing this?
This is my first year doing it, yep.
And give us a kind of midway assessment. What do you think?
It's wonderful. I really feel like, I taught straight first grade last year. And to add kind of an extra thing in there, the 11 second graders that I have this year, I also had last year as first graders. So you get the looping part as well, and you just know those kids so much better. My second graders knew my routine, knew what was expected in the classroom of them. And we got started the second day of school. I mean, it was, we were done learning the routines, the second graders could show the first graders, "Here's how we do things in this classroom." And you just can maximize the learning time so much more. And so I would say right now, my first graders are achieving higher than my first graders were last year at this time. So I definitely see the advantage to this, and I feel like my second graders are just, having known them and knowing their level and where to start right away at the beginning of the year, they've really taken off too. So I would say it's a success.
Great. Now, Amanda, you have a program that has developed a public-private partnership. So you're our example of how public schools have reached out to private enterprise to help foster a program that provides an option for kids. Give us a sense of how this came to be and really some of the details of how your program works.
Sure. Well, there's always been this need for education for kids who are already achieving beyond the standard of what's expected of them at school. And as I stated earlier, without that funding, that's hard to do. And so this partnership that we have with the Hormel Foundation that's provided the funding to implement the programming we're doing now has been so beneficial in order to finally do something to reach those kids' needs beyond what's being done in the regular classroom, because certainly still had differentiation in the classroom as well. And with the Hormel Foundation, a few years ago, two years ago now, because it's three-year funding at this point, gave us the funding in order to implement four, well, three and a half positions for gifted and talented education teachers at the elementary level is where we started with this. And so we have a full-time teacher in two of our larger elementaries and a half-time teacher in our other two elementaries, and a half-time gifted and talented teacher in our kindergarten center as well. And with those teacher positions, it's been an exploration. For the first couple of years here, we're still developing the program and figuring out what is the best way that we can meet these kids' needs. And so that's still under development, but at this point, what we're doing is we're meeting their needs in small group, often within the classroom, sometimes pulled out of the classroom, where the gifted and talented teachers taking those kids who are achieving far beyond what they're expected to at that grade level and providing them with reading or math instruction at the level that they need. And that level can actually be diverse in that small group as well. And so differentiation has to take place where we're providing a little bit different for each child within that group even. But it allows them to have the opportunity to work with kids who think in a more similar level, who achieve at that higher level, but also who are thinking in a more complex and abstract manner than typical age mates are thinking at that point, so that they have that opportunity to really expand their abilities and learn more through that learning opportunity. And so that partnership with the Hormel Foundation is what's funded us to be able to have that opportunity for our kids.
So your funding is at the elementary level for some instruction, and we've talked a little bit about differentiation, but inside the classroom, do you feel that these, what's the definition, I guess maybe we should talk about in terms of what is gifted and talented? Is it simply above average, or are there certain measures that the children have to reach to be identified or?
Typically, gifted and talented students are considered those with superior academic ability. Now, what that is exactly is often defined by your local population. So kids who are far beyond the average of local other students within their school system. And it's not just above-average kids, but really far above. And they're kids who, their ability is quite high. They don't always achieve at the level they're capable of, but they're very capable of doing a lot more than what is expected at the grade that they're currently in.
And who makes that determination?
Well, it isn't an easy one to determine. And in our district, we have an identification procedure for identifying those students. It's not perfect, but we try and look for those kids who are achieving above and beyond what they're doing in their classroom. And so we have a procedure outlined for where we get input from standardized testing, from aptitude and ability testing. We have a parent input piece, a teacher input piece, to try and make that determination of who those kids are. Oftentimes, we start to see who they are based on just those kids who aren't fitting in with the programming they're getting in their classroom, even when a teacher is differentiating. Sometimes it's even beyond what's maybe possible right there, than there for that teacher to do with the student.
And what happens if, I don't want to put it in this in a native way, but if you don't provide that opportunity for the kids, what's the typical result for a gifted and talented kid in a system that doesn't allow them to express?
I think that the detriment to students when we don't provide them with an education that's appropriate for them is that they don't learn how to continue to work and to achieve. We have students who are very capable, and they get into our school system, and they find out very quickly, starting in kindergarten, that, "Well, I already know this stuff that the teacher's teaching me." And so sometimes they become troublemakers, not always though. Sometimes they just sit back and they do exactly what's expected of them because kindergarten's a happy place and we love it, and they do what they're supposed to do, but as they continue to go on in their schooling, they realize, "I already know this stuff. I'm just sitting here waiting for all these other kids to figure out what I already know." And so some students in that position, they become turned off from school altogether, and they lose their interest in school, they lose their passion for learning. Some of them learn to just get by with what they already know, and they never try any harder. And so when they get older, middle school, high school, sometimes college for these kids, and they finally hit the wall where that natural ability isn't enough to do something, it can cause real harm to that student. They can end up thinking, "Oh, I'm not as capable as I thought I was", and that can cause a lot of problems for them socially and emotionally when they start to have that self-doubt in their ability. But they also never learn, kids never learn to work for achieving a goal. And so often, kids learn not to have any study habits, because they don't have to study. They already know what's on the test before the test is even created sometimes. And so it is a detriment to kids when we don't tap into their potential and teach them at the level they're capable of and allow them to continue growing.
And when you have this public-private partnership, does the foundation have any say in how you use the funds? Or what's that like for other educators that may be the interest in looking at private-public partnerships? Are you ever worried about the private side wanting to dictate to the school what is taught?
Well, I wasn't around in the initial time when everything came about. But the foundation was interested in knowing how we could develop some programming for kids, and interested in providing some funding. And so we had a proposal for them. There's more to it than just these teacher positions, but that was a part of it. And they are not interested in dictating exactly what we do with those teacher positions or the money or the kids, just that we're working to achieve something. And so they give us the ability as educators to plan and determine exactly what that is that we're doing.
All right, great. Well, Wayne, you and Steve have virtual operations that you have experience with, and you also have an online, maybe you can share with us the difference between those two. But tell us a little bit about technically, how does this work to take high school classes online?
Okay. Well, Amanda did a nice roll-in for me there, because that's exactly what you can do on an online environment. The way I do it is I teach mathematics, and particularly Algebra II. And what I can do is, well, I lay out my quarter on what I'm going to cover for that that meets the state's standards and that kind of thing. And I can produce my screencast for kids, so kids can watch what's expected of them, how to do the work, that type of thing. They can read the book, they can do specified examples and everything like that. They're giving the curriculum so well that I'm kind of worried about my job here in about five years. I'm going to have it down after a while. But for example, the book that I use, it's actually being taught, there are videos that are being taught by the person who wrote the book. So Elaine Martin Gay is the author of the book. And she also goes through and shows the students how to do all the various topics you would expect in an Algebra II book. Then it comes to a situation where, okay, now it's to see how well the students have grasped the information. They've got interactive videos where they'll produce a question, they'll have the student work it, and then they'll see if they get the answer correct. When it comes to doing a homework assignment, each of the homework assignments are, they have a database of problems. Over on the right, they should have on there, you know, show me how to do this problem. Show me how, a similar problem to this, they have a video on there to explain this where they had, you know, if they didn't catch it in the 20-minute, half-an-hour video, and they can watch it again, and they say, oh, now I follow what they just said. The answers can be written in a symbolic format. They don't just have to be A, B, C, D. The kids actually have to do the graphing, they have to do the, you know, the cubed root of 3X plus 7 over 2, or something like that. They have to put the answers in that type of format. So it gives the same type of solution interaction that I would have in a classroom, but I can do it at a different pace. So if you have a kid who's very strong in mathematics, that can fly through this curriculum, and this is another point of discussion, what we're talking about is, maybe that student doesn't need the nine weeks to do his Algebra II for the quarter. Maybe he only needs seven weeks, and we can push him faster through. So, you know, we'd like to map that all the way out. So that gives us a little bit of differentiation. So you're not dependent upon the class, you're dependent upon your abilities on any of these things, so.
And when you offer an online class, do you have kids sitting together in another room? Or is everybody at home at their own computer? How do they get computers? How does some of the mechanics of that work?
Good question. Online doesn't mean they have to be all virtual. You know, in Houston, we have some online courses that are taken by students in our physical buildings. It's just they're accessing the curriculum using the internet. And they can be in a very, you know, traditional-type setting. But we also have many students that are online virtual. The major difference is, you know, in a traditional-type educational setting, it's more seat-based. So you have, you know, a semester's worth of work to get from point A to point B. The problem is, not every student progresses at that same rate. Where in the online virtual world, students, it's more competency-based, you know, than seat-based. So here's a point A, point B, you got to get to point B to get a credit. And that's confined within a semester. But we do see students that are very gifted and bright, sometimes can't be challenged enough in that very traditional setting, because they want to run. In their traditional school, they were kind of walking at the average pace of everyone. So we have a lot of students that really embrace that style of learning, because, you know, they can engage in that curriculum, it's available to them 24/7, so it's always there. Their teachers will have business hours, so if there's a need for assistance, then they can email or contact their teacher, and there can be that synchronous discussion. So, but it does take a student that's, you know, good at time management and a pretty good independent learner in that respect.
How do you make sure, Wayne, that your kids, you know, if you give them a test, is it an open-book test? How do you know they don't have the answers right there beside them? How do you handle the accountability piece?
In terms of the tests, the way I handle it, I don't waste my tests as much I do my homework, because the homework, it's generated, there's a database of questions. So, you know, that student would go through and get different questions that they're sitting right next to somebody else. So I can even show them a problem with the idea that, you know, they're going to get a similar problem, but not exactly like that. But that's a good question. In terms of a test, that is, that would be a hard thing to monitor. But the way I handle that is I look at it then for the entire quarter, what is their work up to this point? I can do that better now, because when I was in the traditional classroom, it's hard when you've got 150, 180 kids to grade all those papers. So you tended to just grade the tests and look at the test. Well, in this case, we grade all the homework, all the problems, all the time, so the test is just another snapshot of how they're doing.
Better overall picture, all right.
And the online students still need to take the same tests, the MCA test as the other ones.
The real bar is, are you prepared enough to pass that test?
To get through that test, all right. Cindy, you talked a little bit earlier about kind of how homeschooling works, but a lot of folks do have questions about that, and how it works, and do you spend all day with the kids? Or do you take them out into the real world? And give us a picture of what a day is like for a teacher and a student in a homeschool setting.
Well, every homeschool family's different, because every family dynamics are different. I can give you what my family does. Boy, I have them out of bed by 7:00, and they're in their seats at 7:30 during their schoolwork. And I think that breeds a good work ethic for them down the road. We don't sleep in, and we don't do our school in our pajamas. A lot of people think we do. But we sit down, and I work with my oldest student, because when they're in elementary school, my job is to be a teacher. By the time they hit junior high, my job is to be more moving into coaching. And by the time they hit high school, they should be on their own, learning in their control. And I'm only there for, to come back as a checkpoint, and to make sure that they're meeting the curriculum I've laid out for them and the timeframes that I needed them. So I work with my oldest daughter first, and she's a Type A, and boy, if you give her assignments, she's going to have them done four days ahead of time, so she can have some time off on Friday. Whereas my son, and I want to say something about gifted and talented, I think we have left boys behind. And you might see this when you do in first and second grade, they're not girls. And they learn at a totally different rate than girls do. And we tend to lump them in a school, unfortunately, and they all have to behave the same way. And of course, the girls behave usually better, and we want the boys to do that, too. And my son, he struggled a little bit with reading, and boys really don't flourish, I don't think, until about eight or nine. And they kick in. And that's exactly what he did. If I had not taken him home and worked with him and realized he's just a boy, and this is what it's going to take for him, I think he would have been a very frustrated child. And so I can see his skills, and we've worked on the reading a lot. And now he's just, boom, he's right up there with his sister, and it had to be at his speed. And my youngest one, she likes to tell me stories right in the middle of everything that we're doing. And so we chat, but she's more of a worldly personality, and she will relate school to her friends, or what she saw, or what she acted. And so I have to gear each of my teaching to each of my children's personalities. But we're generally done by 2:00. And we do take field trips, and hopefully Dad takes vacation days and goes with us. And it's a lifestyle, it's our family. My school is my kitchen table, and it doesn't stop there. It's everything, you know. I teach my kids how to cook, how to fix the car, they're going to learn how to do that. Everything that I need to know, really by 12, they should be handling most of it.
All right, very good. We are going to come back and learn a little bit more about charter schools. But what we're going to do is take another quick look, because education delivery is an ever-changing subject, and we want to talk a little bit about what the role is for the communities going forward. Let's take a look.
The delivery of education will continue to evolve and change. We hope new innovations will continue to push us to greater accomplishments as institutions, individuals, and learners. As communities, we will need to engage all stakeholders to successfully navigate the field of options. Who should be involved in making education decisions? What innovations are on the horizon that should be encouraged? How can we effectively measure what needs to take place to enhance all forms of delivery?
All right, Lisa, charter schools do seem to be generated by community. There seems to be a core group of folks in the community that says, we'd like something different, an alternative to the standard of public school. But as you mentioned, charter schools are public schools. So give us a primer on how charter schools are different, and talk a little bit about some of the specialties that occur.
Certainly. It's a big question. How are they different? Charter schools are, well, again, I talked a little bit about the application process, but it actually starts with a group of sometimes parents and a teacher, sometimes a group of teachers within a school district who are wanting something different for themselves as teachers, or for the students that they're serving currently. Sometimes it's a nonprofit group who says, we have a really great arts program here, and we'd like to design a school around that arts program. So a lot of different initiatives, but it's almost, to my, I'm thinking back, I think all of them have been community-driven with both parents and teachers. State law actually requires that there be at least one licensed teacher on a founding team for a charter school. So there's at least one on each group. And many times, it makes up the whole founding group. So I think that that's how they get started. And then usually, before you can even submit an application to the state, you have to go out and hold public meetings within your community, because the state's going to look at you if you come with an application and say, well, great, it's an idea, but who's going to show up? So you actually have to have an idea of, well, we went to this library on this date, and, you know, this public school on this date, and this church on this date, and here's the names of the lists of kids and families who are interested. And out of a population of a school district in Northfield with 4,000 students, we have 200 on this list who are looking for an option like the one we've put together.
Is there a minimum number that's required, or that the state generally likes to see before they grant a charter?
You know, we actually probably get more feedback from that, from an authorizer perspective, than we do from the Department of Education. I actually do finances for charter schools, I'm a business manager, and I can, I will tell a school that if you have less than 100 students, you'd better be really creative about figuring out how you're going to make it work, because there is kind of this threshold of 100 is really that number that allows you to provide the services that you want to for your students.
Now Cindy mentioned just kind of the per-pupil funding, which all of you, I know, are familiar with, but that is, I'm going to have you describe it, because the difference is, is it doesn't go to the homeschool, but it does to the charter?
It does, that is correct.
Explain that technical detail for us.
Well, and the great thing is, is it works the same for all public schools, whether you're a public charter or a public traditional school. I know that that's confusing when I call it a traditional public, but it works the same for all public schools. So the state has a formula. And if you're in kindergarten, you generate, believe it or not, .612 of $5,124. And if you're in high school, grade 7 through 12, you generate 1.3 times that $5,124. Now, different communities within the state might also have additional compensatory ed dollars based on their economic factors within their communities.
But that's the basic funding from the state?
That's the basic funding from the state, yep. It follows a student wherever they go. And interestingly, if a student in Austin is being homeschooled, Austin doesn't actually get those funds either. So Austin doesn't get to claim that student. Austin can only claim for the number of actually enrolled students who actually show up in their building, or who are taking an online course, or, so you could maybe petition the state for those funds. Somebody should get them.
And to help charters, there's some money upfront to help a charter move forward the first three years. There's a lot of efforts to try to help charters be innovative and different.
Yes, the whole process of putting together what's your technology program going to look like? How do you purchase your computers? How do you put your first building together? Where do you buy your desks from? Those funds, because a traditional school has already had those things in place, and their students are coming every year, they don't have that big initial startup cost. So the federal government has put in some significant dollars into charter schools to get them off the ground, yep.
We did have a viewer call in, which I think, with a question specifically for you, Betsy, but I think applies to all of these approaches, and I'd be interested to hear all of your answers. But the question actually came from a caller from Mason City who said, how do you incorporate parents into the classroom? And in your situation, the multi-age or multi-grade, but all of you think about how you would answer that? How do you incorporate parents into perhaps some of these more unusual teaching methods?
I have an open-door policy, and so I actually encourage my parents to come into the classroom. And I have parent volunteers that come in actually every single morning, and they just help out. And I will sometimes have a sample of a lesson that I want them to do with a small group of kids, or they'll maybe work on reading words, or different crafts or activities, seasonal activities that we need to get done. But I think they're the biggest asset that we have as teachers, and we need to make sure that they're a vital part of our classrooms and helping us in our classrooms. It helps me tremendous, because with all these kids at different levels, sometimes my time is limited. And so if I can use them to help out, to work with other kids, that helps. And I think it's great for them to see their kids learning and learn right alongside with them.
Great.
Parent involvement is crucial. It tremendously is. And I think we've gone through a struggle in education where now both mother and father are generally in the workplace, and there's not as much time that there really should be for kids in their educational process. So in the online world, parent involvement and oversight is crucial, especially when these children are young in their primary grades. It really does kind of work with the parent, and they're helping as a learning coach make sure the student is progressing. Now, there's a teacher involved to make sure there's assessment of materials and stuff like that. But as students get older, they get more independent, and that's, you know, mom and dad isn't going off to college with, you know, students. So there is a need for that student to take on that ability to be an independent learner. But parent involvement is really crucial for students to be successful and to provide that oversight. In the online world, we have the ability, and a lot of traditional schools are doing this as well now, where students can actually go into their students, our parents can go into their students' gradebook and see their grades, and see the due dates, so they know that, you know, next Monday, you've got a test, you better spend some time working on it this weekend. So that, allowing the parents to be part of that world is very helpful.
One of the things we do is part of our, is we contact a group of kids, they call them our home base. And in the process of contacting the students, many times, we're talking to the parents as well, and we're kind of filling in how things are going for that student. And if the parent has questions, and most of the time, we communicate. Everything we communicate to the student, we also communicate to the parent as well, so that they're involved in the process.
Cindy, you kind of have the opposite issue. You are the teacher and the parent. Do you have any issues or challenges engaging those outside, in terms of finding resources, or whether it's partnering with the schools? Or give us a sense of how you engage the kids in the outside community?
Well, that brings you back to the socialization thing, I suppose. My kids, right now, my daughter and my son are both balled and banned. Now, I don't know if they get the money from the state.
They do for that portion of the money.
That's why Minnesota's very, they figured out the money thing. So they do get their money. They are involved in BAN, and that's good socialization for them. I think at some point, they want to do some sports, and we're going to limit that to We're going to limit that to one sport a year because I think when you get the parental involvement, it's very difficult for some parents who are both working to send their kids to school for eight hours a day, and then they send them off to three or three other places before they even come home, and they have six hours of homework to do. That's not really parental involvement. I think that's really shoving our kids off in different directions. We really want to say, wait a minute, family is your socialization. You should be learning your values from mom and dad, not 27 other people who are your same age. Not that I don't like them, but I don't know their family values. And so we're not protecting our children, we're trying to get their core characters solidified because as we all know, there are mental issues that kids don't use their logic really well until about 23. I mean, there's studies on that that show that. And so it is our job as parents, whether we're coming to your classroom and helping to read, or we're coming to your classroom to say, push them even harder. The parents really need to be involved. It's not just a signing a permission slip and signing it back, oh, I'm involved. No, you're not. You really need to be there with your kids to answer the questions. For my family, our grandparents are like, you're kind of psycho, why are you doing this? You know, who would ever want to be with their kids all day long? Well, we do. And my responsibility is, I do not have to report to the school district, which is another reason I homeschool. I don't want to answer to the school district or any other person telling me how I should school my child. I do, however, have to take an annual exam. And I have chosen, not everybody has to do this as a family, but I have chosen Iowa Basic Skills. I do my testing, and they go in, another company grades them, I get them back, I know exactly, which I already know where they're going to test out at. So that does hold me accountable. If they drop a certain level, then the company that's a testing is obligated to tell the school district that my children are not passing. So there is a level of accountability. But I also, to my in-laws and my parents, they get a report card, and they get exactly what we're studying and what I do to improve my children's positions within the different classes. And so I do that myself to make myself accountable, other than just to my husband and I. And we both have our degrees, but any parent can homeschool, even if they have a GED, but there are restrictions in Minnesota. If you do not have a degree, that you must report to the school district with report cards. And so there's accountability there too.
That's a great segue to my next question, which is how do you define success? How do you know that what you're offering is working? You know, a charter school tries something new, and not all charter schools have made it, gifted and talented. How do we measure success in the systems that we have developed here?
I think that's a great question, and that's one that I've been working on figuring out with our gifted and talented programming because with our students, the traditional measures of success, which are often taking a test and seeing how they do, they top out on those tests. And they've topped out on them before we've ever tried to give them an alternative programming to start with. And so then we need to see, well, how do we see where they started to what kind of growth that they've actually achieved? And some curriculum offers assessments within the curriculum that allows us to see some kind of growth, rubrics that they do at the beginning and the end of the curriculum and throughout different things, and those are always helpful. Some of the pieces that we look at, though, are also by finding out the information from the stakeholders, a survey that allows us to see how they're feeling the education is going, parents and teachers, but also the kids themselves, talking to them and seeing how these things are affecting them and what they're benefiting from the programming and how we can continue to improve and tweak and change things so that we can continue to help these kids grow. Because I do think it's important to have some kind of accountability, and especially with our students who are already achieving above the level, that can be easy to let go because they look like they're doing great no matter what we do. So it's an important thing to find, and we're finding it through other measures right now and continuing to look for what we can do to see how our kids are growing and achieving and what we're doing with them.
Schools are getting much more scientific about assessing students and using that data appropriately. In Houston Public Schools, we do the standardized MCA test, and there are certain benchmarks in a student's career that they must pass these tests. But we do something called NWA testing, where we test the students in the fall and the spring, and that will give us norms, not only how that student is doing, but how they're doing against students in the district and then against the state. So we can see as a kid progresses through their educational journey, are they staying where they should? You know, if they're not, then there's some intervention that needs to take place. And sometimes that may mean that this isn't the right model for you. You know, you're not staying up, there's something going on here, maybe you're not as disciplined as you need to be to be in a virtual-type education. But it really gives you a good track record, and you can even drill down to find out within strands of curriculum on where you're struggling with. So you can tell, you know, Johnny or Sally, you're really having trouble with number facts, you know, and the person facilitating that, the teacher or whatever, can really work on that. So they're really getting much more data-driven rather than at the end of third grade, yep, you passed, or no, you didn't. You know, it's much more individualized, and I think that's a real leap forward for education.
And how about in the charter school movement? I mean, some haven't made it, and is that a financial piece or?
I think it's actually been both. I mean, we've certainly seen the financial failures, they're the ones that hit the front page of the Star Tribune, Pioneer Press. I think that we have less failures around student performance than we do around finances. But that said, I think there's, it's hard to take a new program and show consistent growth within your first three years. And part of that is that you have a new population, so your first year of test data isn't actually your work, it's the work from the school prior to you. And then your second year, you have the whole, every charter school goes through their transition year, which means all these parents who came to the school who thought this is what it was going to be, and then they thought, that's not actually what we wanted, so we're like homeschooling. And then you end up with your next round coming in. So now you're comparing academic data from group one, who is no longer the same as what group two is. So the other ways that they then determine whether or not they're being successful is to look at some of their non-academic goals. Now, we have to meet our academic goals ultimately, but in the meantime, while you're growing your program, what are your non-academic goals? How much involvement do you have from your community? How engaged are your students? Many schools are doing something called a HOPE survey, where they're actually finding out, students who came in, particularly those who were disenfranchised in a traditional system or in other environment, come in, and when they walked in the door, they were, I'm never going to be anything, I'm not going to school. And, you know, 12 months, 24 months later, they're thinking about, my son, my eighth grader is one example of this, he's determined now he's going to go to Cambridge University in England because he did a project on Simon Blackburn, who happens to be a philosopher. So those types of, and those are nice for the community to have. They don't hold much water up at the state of Minnesota over No Child Left Behind. So there has to be a way to do both, have the academic goals and the non-academic. But again, I think that all schools need a chance to develop those programs to meet those goals.
My goodness, so much information. Well, we have certainly learned a great deal about the many options available to us in the region. Here at KSMQ, we always encourage our audience to be active viewers, and I encourage you